First one of the 2018, hopefully as a productive year as last. Go ahead and call this meeting to order. I'd ask Mr. Lyons to come down and lead us in vacation. We have two cadets from Carl Albert High School, Cadet Robinson and Cadet Barkmiah. Who, Cadet Robinson's a senior at Carl Albert and be going in computer science when she graduates. And Wesley is a junior. And we welcome them. And Tim, if you could come down and lead us in prayer and then we'll do the pledge allegiance. Please stand.
Please join me in prayer by ballying your heads. Our Father in Heaven, we're indeed grateful for this opportunity to gather tonight and exercise one of our greatest blessings to this country, and that's democracy. Father, we ask thee at this time to please bless us with thy Spirit that we might make righteous decisions in this night that are in the best interest of our constituents, of the families of Midwest City. Father, we ask thee to please especially bless our employees that they may be safe in the work that they do on our behalf. And ask thee to watch over us in this evening as we travel home that we might all travel in safety. And these things we pray for in the name of thy Son and Jesus Christ. Amen.
Will you please join us in reciting the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, M.C. Thank you guys for being here tonight.
Thank you for having us.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
Okay, we do have some community-related announcements. I'll start off. I just want to recap what our employees did over the Christmas holidays. Our employees are involved in several fundraising activities throughout the season. And our neighborhood services folks collected over eighteen thousand dollars' worth of food at Sam's over a period of three days. Our, which that food and along with the other efforts of other employees throughout the city, distributed over two hundred food baskets and presents and other things to our citizens. We also helped out the Middel Food Pantry, the Middel School Food Pantry. And in our division upstairs that handles grants, they distributed a hundred and seventy-five baskets to our residents over at Autumn House, which is a senior living assistance center. So this was all done by our employees throughout the city, and they deserve a round of applause. Thank you. Ms. Allen, you have an announcement?
Well, yes. The twenty-first annual Midwest City Dr. Martin Luther King Junior prayer breakfast. The theme is, "We're Come This Far by Faith." It is January the fifteenth, two thousand and eighteen, Midwest City Sheraton Reed Center. The breakfast will be at seven a.m. The program is at eight a.m. The tickets are fifteen dollars if anyone would like to buy tickets tonight. I do have some tickets, but hope to see everyone there. And we always enjoy Midwest City Dr. Martin Luther King's prayer breakfast every year. Thank you.
Any other announcements on the horseshoe?
I have one, Mayor. Again, I want to send an accolade out to our Community Resource Officer at Midwest City High School, as well as our Midwest City P.D. There were threats made against Midwest City High School last Friday, and those threats were very efficiently and effectively thwarted by our school resource officer there, as well as working in conjunction with the full Midwest City P.D. And I want to thank them as a parent of a student at Midwest City High School, as well as the Midwest City resident for a job well done.
Thank you. Any other announcements?
Just got a couple real quick ones. As I try to do at the first meeting of each month, I give you the latest and greatest sales tax report for the city. As I know you know, but many of you may not know, sales tax is critical importance to us in our day-to-day operations of the city. It represents about seventy-five percent of the revenue that we use to fund our general government operations, which includes police, fire, dispatch, nine-one-one, and then all of the general government departments such as street department, parks and recreation, human resources, information technology, all those departments are funded through sales tax. So, yeah, sales taxes is very, very important to us. It's why we encourage folks to shop local whenever they can. So, for the January sales tax check, we saw an increase of about thirty-seven thousand in sales tax and about thirty-five thousand in use tax, representing about seventy-two thousand increase over the same period last year. For the year, we're about one and a half percent above the, for the first half of the year, above last year. And compared to projection, we're point seven-seven percent ahead of projection. So, we don't want our finance director to get too big of a head about how accurate she is about with her projections, but we do appreciate what a great job she does. So, I would also ask everyone to kind of pay attention to your sales receipt when you buy something in Midwest City. We went to a new sales tax rate beginning January first. It increased to nine point one percent. And should you notice that they may be using the old sales tax rate, please let us know, let our finance department know, and they will report that to the Sales Tax Commission, who will reach out to that retailer and inform them of what the rate needs to be. So, it will be important to us. And that new sales tax rate went into effect on January first of this year. The only other thing is sanitation service will be as scheduled on Monday, both sanitation and recycling service. That's all I have.
Any further announcements? Hearing none, we'll move into our consent agenda. These items are placed on consent agendas so the council members, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item does not meet with the approval of all council members or members of the audience, wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order.
Move to approve the consent agenda?
Have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction? Consent agenda pass. First discussion item?
This is PC nineteen thirty, public hearing with discussion consideration of a petition to rename Winsong Drive located within the Turtlewood addition to Snapper Lane. Mr. Harless?
Yes, sir. This is the residents of Winsong Edition had petition to rename the Winsong Drive into Snapper Lane. At one time, this drive was going to be completed as a subdivision was built out and connect with Winsong Drive. But as this property was developed, the connection was no longer going to be made. So, the residents have requested that name be changed to Snapper. Planning Commission recommended approval of this. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
We do have a couple of residents have signed up to discuss this item with our council. Will Mr. Gilbranson come to the podium? And could you tell us who you are and where you live, ma'am?
My name's Jerry Gilbranson. I'm president of the Winsong HOA. I live at one oh five two five Songbird Lane. Back in two thousand and six is when we first discovered that the developer was going to open Winsong Drive from fifteenth to twenty-ninth, and that's when we became concerned about so much traffic coming in through our neighborhood, which is an HOA. Like Mr. Harless said, that was approved in two thousand and six. And I have a copy of that if you'd like to see it, okay? And it was approved that that street would not be called Winsong Drive. Since the sign went up, we've had emergency vehicles come through Winsong trying to get into that area. They can't do it because it's blocked. We've had construction vehicles come through there, and they can't come through there because it's blocked. So, right now, we have a gate that goes across the end of Winsong Drive to allow the fire department when they need to get in there if they needed to fight a fire. So, we really need that street renamed to make it, you know, what it should have been all along. So, that's my opinion about it.
Any members of the council have any questions?
Is Mr. Dossie here? Did he set up to speak?
I think the original plat had Winsong Drive on it, and I don't think the developer changed it after the approval in oh-six. So, the city, seeing the plat, put the sign up.
Yes, ma'am. It got past us, and we understand that.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mr. Dossie, you want to come and please, well, you know the procedure, name, address, and...
Yeah. So, Aaron Dossie, two-two-one-one Winsong Drive in the Turtlewood addition. I've sent a letter to, I believe you and my councilman, an email and a letter, kind of lengthy. Sorry about that. I don't think the street names are going to change the ability of different systems and people to navigate and identify locations. I don't think that's really how you're, at most, any navigation system I'm aware of works. And for those of us who are already, to me, it may be unfortunate that this is, was missed by the city and the street name wasn't what it was supposed to be originally. I personally am not a fan of Snapper. I would like an opportunity to maybe discuss if it is changed, but I don't see it as going to change things for the positive, and it's going to cost some of us who run our businesses out of our homes a lot in terms of changing records and contracts. And I have federal government contracts worth a good bit of money. And I have, you know, my accountant will have to comb through everything and change all the addresses. Plus, probably every residence who has a driver's license is going to have to now get a new driver's license, from what I understand. And I think it's a change that, again, it may be unfortunate that it was missed and it should never have been Winsong, but now it is. I kind of wish if the street would have gone through originally. I'm not a big fan of gated neighborhoods and one-way-in, one-way-out places. But now, a lot of us live there, and I think, I don't see the positives outweighing the negatives on this one, in my opinion.
Thank you for your comment. And I'll just, let me add that this is primarily more of a public safety issue than anything. I was out there this afternoon or this morning and drove it. We strive to get a four-minute response time, especially on our fire and police departments anywhere in the city. It's almost two and a half miles if I go down to the end of what would be Snapper and have to turn around and come back to get back into Winsong. It's two and a half miles, and basically on an average of forty-seven miles an hour, that adds about two and a half minutes onto our response time, which in both fire and EMS, those are critical times, especially if somebody doesn't, isn't breathing, because permanent brain damage starts to occur about five minutes into an incident. So, it's more of a, more of a public safety issue. And that's two and a half minutes whether you go Westminster side or post side. From my calculations, and again, I drove the neighborhood this morning, there's nineteen completed residents along that street that you live on now, and appears to be about eight to nine that are actually occupied. So, before we get any further occupation, it just makes sense for us to go ahead and move ahead with this and get it done before any more people are affected. And again, I apologize for our oversight, not catching this when the plat was redone. But the fact is, it is a public safety issue, and I just don't think it's wise for us to put anybody in harm's way because of a street sign. And so, again, I'm sorry that you're going to be inconvenienced. It wasn't our intent, but it's something that we feel, or at least I feel like it's prudent for us to move forward with.
Do you have any actual evidence that changing the street name will improve the prospect of...
Well, only thirty-one years as a police officer, I can tell you that we have two streets in Midwest City named Robin Road. And if you're not paying attention, you'll respond to one or the other, and most of the time, when you're in a hurry, it's the wrong one. And that's posed some instances in the past where it's prolonged our response time. Sometimes dispatch, as long as we get dispatchers, police officers, and firemen, and EMS personnel from the human race, there is going to be instances where we mess up. And we either respond, if we leave it the same, the addresses on both ends of the street are so close together that if you're not paying attention, you could respond to one or the other. I think the twenty-one twenty-eight is the last street number on your side, and twenty-one twenty, or nineteen, is the last one on the Winsong side. So, you can see that there's a possibility that we could screw this up. And if we had the names separated, we eliminate that. So, that's the main purpose, at least from my perspective, that we need to proceed with this. I don't have any hard, fast numbers because it hadn't been established long enough for us to get that kind of data.
Mr. Mayor, the, I think even the service industry or the delivery would agree that it would lead to a lot of complications trying to get to addresses. And I think most of the residents have been in favor of changing it, from what I have heard. Where did they come up with Snapper? And then you also mentioned earlier in the pre-meeting that they would be able to hold that address. And, Mira, you might mention that, and then...
I'm sorry. I negated to mention that. I got on the phone with the postmaster this morning, the manager down here at, of our post office on Reno. And when we enter our paperwork to the post office, they will co-mingle these two street addresses to where there will be no interruption in your mail service. And you don't have to do anything as far as submitting a change of address or anything. It would be Winsong slash Snapper, or whatever they end up naming it. And that way, there will be no interruption in your mail service at all, from what he explained to me. Well, I'm sure you would on business cards and such, and I understand that. And again, I do apologize for any inconvenience we did cause you. But as you can see, it's more of a public safety issue. Well, I'm going to have to defer to Mr. Harless on that because that's out of my room of expertise. Mr. Harless?
Yes, sir. To answer the first question as to where Snapper Lane came from, the developer gives us the names, and we contacted the developer, and that's what he proposed the name to be, Snapper Lane. And the hearing tonight is to hear whether the name should be changed to Snapper Lane. Planning Commission recommended it be changed to Snapper Lane. That's what's in front of you is to hear whether it be changed to Snapper Lane. I'm guessing that if you wanted to change it to something else, it's a recommendation at this point, so...
I have a comment, actually, for you, sir. I would just say, and I brought this up in pre-council, it's my understanding that once you're assigned an address from the postmaster, you forever get to keep that address. It happened to me personally in my original home address. They assigned us, it was rural, they assigned us a box number. Then they went through, whenever they went through with the nine-one-one system, and assigned new box numbers. However, we were always allowed to use the original box number that we were authorized by the postmaster. So, you might actually check with the postmaster to see for purposes of your business cards and your contracts and so forth. Now, again, if the street is renamed, it could lead to confusion for people trying to locate if you have a home business, but just as an FYI, you might look into that issue. The other thing is, I would question, and Billy, maybe you know this, or ma'am, you know this, did the homeowners association have a conversation about renaming the street? I mean, did the homeowners association have any input?
No, we didn't have any input whatsoever, other than the original two thousand and six minutes, which stated it would be called Sandu Boulevard. That was our original name.
It was going to be called what? I'm sorry.
Sandu Boulevard.
And I... That was on the original plat, yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that was on the original plat. And I can tell you, the only reason that this would have been named Winsong ever would have been if it was considered to go all the way through. Because you would never, ever, because I was on the planning commission for too many years. We always guard against names that are similar, and you can't get to it. The fire department would have never signed off on a Winsong at one end and a Winsong at another with a dead end in between. I mean, that's a safety issue that's gigantic. I mean, well, and as the mayor said, there's Robin Road about a mile that way, and there's a Robin Road about four miles that way. And it's, when these guys are in a hurry, and most of them, they're from, you know, kind of that area, they're going to go when they hear that name. And so, this, yeah, it's kind of, to be honest, it's a no-brainer to not, or to have, you would never want to have the same name going through when there's a dead end. And I'm sure probably the name Snapper, like, I don't know, I'm not the developer. Nearly all the streets in there are named after turtles, like Turtlewood and Box Turtle and Shell and all that. That's probably where they come up with the name Snapper, like a snapping turtle.
I, my view on it, if the developer wants to name it that, he's the one developing it.
That's right.
We might all hate it, but that's what he's asked it to be named.
And as do the emergency vehicles coming through Winsong. They have.
Right.
And I have seen it myself, and I know that they went all the way down to the end of Winsong, which is like a half a mile, and they come back out, go all the way back around, because I can hear them going into Turtlewood. So, I know it's happening. Not only that, there's tons of construction vehicles that come through because GPS has not been updated. So, and, you know, it's just, it's a big mess down there. And we want to be able to completely block that off. It's a dead-end street.
If there's no more discussion, I move we approve it.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction? Motion carries. Next item?
PC nineteen thirty-one, discussion consideration of approval of the proposed final plat of Sundance Section Six, a single-family residential subdivision for the property described as a part of the northeast quarter, Section Nine Township eleven north, range one west. Mr. Harless?
Yes, sir. This is the request for a final plat of Sundance Edition. This is the last section for that development. It's developed under the old subdivision ordinances, which allow for the plat to be filed, the final plat to be filed, and then the improvements to be put in a later date. Chris Anderson from SMC is here to, I believe he's here too. He's not here. Sorry about that. Thought he was going to be here. But it's a final plat. Planning Commission has recommended and staff recommend approval. This is kind of a formality deal where the preliminary plat, it falls in line with the requirements of the preliminary plat, and planning commission staff recommend approval.
Move to approve.
I have a motion. I have a second. I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction? Motion carries. Next item?
This is PC nineteen thirty-two, discussion consideration of approval of the proposed final plat of Turtlewood Sixth Edition for the property described as a part of the southeast quarter, Section Seven Township eleven north, range one west. Mr. Harless?
Yes, sir. This is for the final plat of Turtlewood Six. Staff and planning commission recommend that this be tabled. This was advertised to be heard tonight, and since there was some issues with the preliminary plat at the previous council meeting over some drainage issues that still need to be corrected, we had to go ahead and put this on the agenda since it was advertised that way. We do anticipate that those drainage issues will be resolved for the next council meeting. We've been in touch with them for the developer and also the engineers. Had several discussions, I don't know, three or four meetings with them. Have been talking with some of the surrounding property owners that addressed the council at that meeting. We hope to have that resolved, and it looks, I anticipate that those will be resolved for the next meeting. Anyway, this needs to be tabled so that we can adopt, or so that we can recommend approval of the preliminary plat.
Make a motion to table this until the twenty-seventh of February?
Yes, sir.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to table until the twenty-second of February. Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
I would just like to say, could that be updated to take out Winsong Drive and put Snapper Drive, so that it says that on the plat now?
Once we...
Because right now, it still says Winsong Drive.
Oh, yeah. The Winsong deals are done.
Okay.
That's a done deal, yes, ma'am. Continue on with the vote. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction? Motion carries. Next item?
This is PC nineteen thirty-six, public hearing with discussion consideration of an ordinance to amend the planned unit development governed by the C-three Community Commercial District for the property described as a part of landline in the southwest quarter, Section Four Township eleven north, range two west of the Indian and Meridian City of Midwest City, Oklahoma County, Oklahoma. Mr. Harless?
Yes, this is to amend the PUD. The applicant, along with the city, have requested to change this from groundwater storage under the parking lot, the proposed parking lot, that was put into the PUD when they want to go to a more traditional retention-detention pond. When they made that request, it altered the PUD enough that we felt that it should go back before the planning commission and council because it changes some of the circulation, it changes the parking configuration. And there was enough people, there were enough people to see from the surrounding property owners, neighborhoods, high-profile project, that we felt that need to be evaluated with the change of conditions. It does meet all the minimum requirements. There have been some questions about, does it change how the storm water will be discharged into any other areas? It'll basically work the same as the old system. It just won't have a parking lot over it. There's an additional question as to whether the city will maintain the detention facility or whether the developer or the property owner will maintain it. It will be maintained by the property owner. The city will not be responsible for its maintenance. I'll be glad to answer any questions. Staff recommends approval, along with the planning commission.
I want to ask if there's anybody in the audience, particularly from Ranched that wants to speak on this issue.
This is Mr. Terry Haynes. He is with the engineering firm representing the Warren Group.
Thank you, Mr. Hayneson. Terry Haynes with SMC Consulting Engineers, eight fifteen West Main, Oklahoma City. And I am here on behalf of the Warren Theater Development Group, in which we also have four gentlemen with us tonight, including Mr. Trail, Mr. Gray, Mr. Pandeski, and Mr. Blaine. Pardon me, Les. So, we are, we reviewed the staff's comments, the technical evaluations, and we're in agreement with those comments to replace the language in the PUD for an underground stormwater detention facility to an above-ground detention facility with a wet pool. So, we're here to answer any questions you might have, and we do respectfully request your approval of this change.
Is there any further discussion on this item?
Move to approve. Move to approve.
Wait, I still have a question. Any comment? We have noticed this issue to Ranchat, um, on the issue. Cause this is an existential change to this project.
Did I, uh, say it's gonna be wet all the time?
Notice on the screen in front of you, there is a blue area, which that portion of this detention area is wet. That's a, a pond. It will have a fountain feature, which will help to aerate that, that pond. Uh, and so we designed it to be regularly shaped, has a park light setting with, uh, trees and, and, uh, boulders escaping around the pond, uh, again, to be more aesthetically pleasing, uh, for our customers entering into this development.
How deep do you expect that, the blue area? I'm sorry, how deep do you expect the blue area to be? And the reason I'm at, there's, it, you know, I'm sure you got it deep enough where you'll be able to maintain a pretty-
Yes, sir.
Clear, you know.
And that's a good question. In Oklahoma, we, we have, uh, silt, silty clays that like to float. So you have to, you have to provide a depth so that you, you create clarity. And in the design from construction up, uh, we seal the bottom of the pond so that we, uh, don't lose the volume of water that's, that's held in there, other than to evaporation or from wind, uh, wind crossing it. Uh, so the depth of the pool itself is about eight feet deep, which is sufficient to provide the clarity. The aeration from the fountain also helps that clarity. The depth of the dry detention, which is the brown area that you see on the screen in front of you, the depth of the dry detention is about six to seven feet deep. And that takes care of our onsite, uh, stormwater detention requirements.
And then if you need to add some aeration to keep it from, uh, what do you call it, uh, get pungent, or you'll, you can do that?
It will have a fountain, and that fountain is, uh, designed to provide the aeration. Yes, sir.
My follow-up question for that is, so if the pond is gonna be eight feet deep, um, what's the perimeter around the pond gonna be in order to present, prevent individuals from intruding on that pond? Or kids getting into that eight-feet-deep water?
Well, we, we designed it with a, uh, rock boulder perimeter, ledge around its perimeter, so-
Which is how high?
The, the ledge is, is, is about a foot above the water level. The boulder ledge itself is about two feet, uh, deep. But the water level is about one foot below the top of that ledge. The, the side slopes though are very gradual. At the very maximum, we're at a four-to-one slope, and that's about a twenty-five percent grade.
Let me, I, I, on that four-to-one slope.
Yeah.
When DeLisi was talking about their pond on Tenth Street, they were wanting to do it four-to-one, and we said that was too steep.
That, that, it's a similar slope.
So-
The, the, the idea behind the DeLisi pit was that it was going to be designed for people to, uh, use it for recreation.
Well, and I thought one of the other comments is four-to-one's hard to mow and everything else, get your tractors on. So, my concern is, we had, four-to-one was too much for DeLisi and a piece of property that they were gonna turn back over when it's, when they were through. And we wanted it to be less than four-to-one for a safety feature, for specifically, you can get in that water and it's hard to get out, was one of the things that we were told. So with this four-to-one slope here, why are we okay with four-to-one here, but we weren't on DeLisi?
Well, the DeLisi pit was gonna be designed for recreation use, for people to, uh, enter and exit the, the property. And, um, it, it is, it is a concern, I mean, I, four-to-one is, is pretty, pretty steep. I don't think there's any-
But doesn't the depth, I mean, the, the Leacy field is gonna be quite, quite a bit deeper.
But in the brown area, that's five seven, it's gonna be eight foot deep, we're talking fifteen feet, nobody's up there. Worst-case scenario, if it's deeper than six foot, then it's an issue because of the speed it was to keep in and out. There is a safety concern.
And, and I, I don't disagree with you, then, may, maybe, maybe it could be redesigned a little bit to provide a shelf so that if somebody fell into the, the water, that there maybe two, a foot and a half, two foot deep, that there's two or fo, two or three-foot wide shelf.
There actually is in the design. If you're looking your packet, there is an Exhibit B-one, that was attachment within the packet.
I have a look at that, it says max slope four-to-one.
On the outside slope, uh, you're talking about above the, there's a shelf that's also a ten-to-one slope, uh, for the first eight to ten feet away from the top of the pond. As you're going up the slope, that's, that's a ten-to-one slope, very flat.
Is that ten-to-one though, in part of the brown area, that if it's flooded, and we now have a brown area that's covered in water, is that that ten-to-one slope?
Yes.
So where the worst-case scenario, you go four-to-one directly into water during, right after the storm?
No, the ten-to-one is before that. You have the ten-to-one just above the boulder line for eight, eight to ten feet out. And then, and then continuing up the hill is maximum four-to-one. Actually, the, the average slopes around this pond are six-to-one, even the ten-to-one, uh, because we, we created it to be, uh, we, we wanted to create a, a, well, what's the, a, a natural form, if you will, uh, entering into the, the, the center pool area. Now, in the pool area itself, below the, uh, boulder ledge, there's also a, a shelf, which is flat. And that is for maintenance, but it's also for life safety. If someone were to have stepped off into that pond, there is a shelf there.
So, but that's three-foot shelf.
Yes, sir.
Maximum water level, normal lake level. But it can get seven feet higher than the normal lake level. That's the brown area that you set out through there.
That is, that is correct.
So the normal lake level, level is eight foot. You add another seven foot to it, you're damn near to that tree, aren't you?
The seven-foot dry detention area is during the one-hundred-year, uh, developed storm event.
And I understand that, having lived in-
Having lived in Oklahoma, I've seen hundred-year floods twice in ten years.
Yes, sir.
So, but it goes back to my question, worst-case scenario, we have fifteen inches of rain this, two Aprils from now after everything's built, and it's at its max. Is the max fill of that pond, does it max up to about where that tree is? Cause when I'm looking at the diagram here, normal lake level is just on that first boulder, and you've got a shelf there. You add seven more foot at a ten-to-one foot slope, you're probably right up against that tree where the four-to-one slope is.
Mm-hmm, yes, sir.
That's a concern.
Okay. One question I had on, now, are you designing it trying to, uh, not attract any traffic? Or is it, I mean, you're not trying to, you wanna build it to where you really don't want people down by the water's edge?
That's correct, we haven't designed any type of pathways. It's not, not designed as a park, it's designed for an attractive feature, but also serves the purpose of stormwater detention.
Would insurance companies call it an attractive nuisance?
Okay, but with all due respect, nobody designed a Cincinnati Zoo enclosure to attract children to drop into that zoo enclosure and be at risk of life and limb either, but it happened. And that's my concern with this design.
Well, that was a question, I wasn't saying it's a good thing.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just chiming in with you on that, Jeff, that wasn't critical of your question.
My concern is the, yes, it's designed for a hundred-year flood. We've seen two-hundred-year floods here in the last ten years, maybe three. At the worst-case scenario, which we've seen here, your four-to-one, and I think that a body of water there in a nice park setting is an attractive nuisance, I think that's what an insurance company would call it. You're now at, your max water is at that four-to-one slope, which we've already discussed is a little bit on the dangerous side. Is there any way to pull that back just a little bit to where your slope's a little bit safer for, I mean, I've got a twelve-year-old kid, and I watch her all the time, but sometimes they still get out of your sight.
Should, should we, should we then go drain the water thing on Twenty-Ninth Street? Talk about, there's a big water thing on Twenty-Ninth Street between Twenty-Ninth Street and Interstate.
But the difference on that, Rick, is that's already built.
But, but, I mean, gee, this, this is not meant to hold water that far, it's meant to, to let it out, right?
Correct, that's correct. The, the detention area, which is the, the area above the blue, the brown area that was on the screen earlier, it's, the, you, I understand, I've lived through those events as well in the last, uh, ten years. And, but that's why we need those, uh, detention areas, and there are dry detention facilities, uh, all over the Midwest and all over the metroplex area, and, and throughout Midwest City. But the events, uh, are, are periodic to a one-point-one percent chance, it does happen. But it is also designed to drain that water down within twenty-four hours of that event occurring. And, uh, so there is some, uh, caution, obviously, that it needs to be, it needs to occur if anyone is to, uh, approach this area of, of the property during those rainfall events. But, do you have the ability?
Do you have the ability with the available space that you have to make that a little bit better than four-to-one?
Again, the four-to-one was the very maximum, and yes, sir, I'll, I'll, I'll just speak specific, yes, sir. We, we can make it better than four-to-one.
Okay, you know, I think too, Sean, it's kind of a catch-twenty-two, and that's where, what my question was. If you make it too inviting, you know, the, you make it where it's not very steep. If you could build it where it's difficult for a child to, to, to wander off in it, you know, it's, I'm kinda torn before, you know, do you make it flatter and easier to get to, or do you make it, like he's doing it, try to design it where it would be difficult for a young child to just end up in it?
Man, if I was five and I saw a four-to-one slope with water, I'm running towards it.
Well, but with boulders and landscaping and-
That four-to-one slope and everything else is gonna, I, I'm just, I, I'm just going back to, we knew that four-to-one was a little bit of a dangerous slope.
Okay.
We knew that a year and a half ago, when we went through everything with DeLisi, with the sand pit they were going to do, and when they were reclaiming the area.
But that was gonna be designed for recreation, and this is designed where you don't want recreation?
I, I got you, I'm just, I, I just don't think four-to-one's gonna keep, that's just me. I, I just don't think four-to-one's gonna keep you out of, keep, keep somebody, a seven or eight-year-old kid's gonna look at that, and he's not gonna say, oh, that's four foot, I'm not gonna jump in there.
Okay, uh, I do wanna make a point of order, I do have a motion on the floor.
Second.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
No.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item?
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I ask for a roll call vote, I'm, I'm thinking, I don't think this one's gonna-
I, you know, uh, I, you know what, um, I almost wanna, really wanna ask him another question, consider what Sean said about bringing up some more. I, I'm looking at kids, you know, we take, we, this is going to be where kids is gonna be, um, overwhelmed, looking at it. I have some concerns, um-
Can I, can I say one quick thing? We've already voted on it.
Well, no.
When you only have two.
She asked, yes, for a roll call.
But she had the opportunity.
City clerk, go ahead and make a roll call vote, please.
Board one?
No.
Two?
Yes.
Three?
Yes.
Four?
No.
Five?
No.
Six?
Yes.
Mayor?
Yes. She has the motion carries. She made four to three.
Next item?
Motion carries. Next item?
This is, uh, discussion consideration reaffirming council resolution number twenty-fifteen dash oh-seven and presenting formal comments at the public hearing hosted by the Water, Oklahoma Water Resources Board, uh, January sixteenth, twenty-eighteen. Mr. Streets? Mr. Street still here?
Good evening. Obviously, uh, I wanted to make sure that we had an opportunity to reaffirm our position, uh, that was originally stated back in two thousand fifteen with the resolution that's attached to this agenda item, and, uh, give, uh, the city, give myself and other staff members an opportunity to go speak to the Oklahoma Water Resources Board and communicate, uh, a few comments on behalf of the citizens for the city of Midwest City to help protect and preserve the quality of the water that they consume from Lake Thunderbird. Are there any questions?
Hey, and for anybody in the audience, what this is, back in two thousand fifteen, the city of Norman thought it'd be a great idea to dump all their sewer into Lake Thunderbird, where we get our drinking water from. And so, we, we, uh, passed a resolution opposing that, and this is just to, uh, uh, what, to extend it on.
This is essentially a, an opportunity for us to voice those concerns at the appropriate time. This is where they're taking comment, public comment period ends, uh, January sixteenth. And so we're planning to go to the public meeting and, and present these comments officially on behalf of the citizens of Midwest City and obviously the elected officials.
Move to approve?
Second. I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor, indicate by saying aye.
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 Oppose? Ms. Allen, did you vote?
Yes, I did, thank you, and I appreciate what you're doing, thank you, good job.
Thank you very much, appreciate it.
We're not a water source.
Next item is discussion consider- Okay, I'm sorry.
Any abstentions? Motion carries. Next item?
Discussion consideration of appointing a new member to the Midwest City Park and Recreation Board for a three-year term ending on January twelfth, twenty-twenty-one. Staff would request that this item be continued.
Thank you, yes.
I have a discussion on this item, but, before we continue it. Um, but, Phil did remind me a copy of the listing of the board members. There are three nominees on Ward Two, one on Ward Three, two on Ward Four, one on Ward Six. One of the terms, or one of the three nominees on Ward Two, ends May eighth, twenty-eighteen, the term is five. So there is a vacant seat, there is no representative for Ward One, there is no representative for Ward Five. So again, to you, councilwoman, I'm going to do my request to fill the vacant spot representative for Ward One, knowing that you could then fill the spot that expires, um, May eighth, May-
No, well, Susan, I had someone, and apparently, he has moved, he's moved out of the residence. But I do have someone from the, uh, neighborhood association that would like for Ward Five, that would like to be able to have opportunity for that position in the, in my ward. And I think it's only fair. Now, you can now, since you know that's kind of available, that's something that you can do. Have that person ready for that position in Ward One, when, the Ward Two, whenever it becomes available.
You can make a motion, and there can be a second, and we could vote if you-
I, I'm gonna move to appoint a representative to the committee, because it's been available, and you have-
And, and it was, and it was.
And I'm gonna move to nominate Adrian Hares, she's already agreed to serve.
Well, I think that's very rude when that's supposed to be Ward's five-
No, it's not.
Position. Yes, it is, you just appointed someone.
Okay, I'm gonna make a point of order here. Ms. Allen, this, this seat has been open for quite a while. Uh, there's no rule that says that these have to be district or ward appropriate, coming from each ward. I'm going to offer a compromise to both of you. Ms. Allen, next council, you need to come forward with a, a name that's, that's not only qualified, but ready to go. And if not, then Ms. Eads will go with your nomination. Is that acceptable, both of you?
I, I appreciate it, Mayor, thank you very much.
Is that acceptable?
Thank you very much.
So-
Mayor, can I comment too, just so that no one, no one's, uh, accuses Ward Two of stacking the deck? Because there are three people on the park board from Ward Two. And I just wanna remind everybody on the council that one of the reasons there may be more than one person on any given board is it's, number one, it's extremely difficult to find people that are willing to do it. And number two, we don't like to leave vacancies open for very long. So, uh, I did, I did have someone appointed, the last one was from my ward. However, the reason it came from Ward Two is nobody else stepped up to nominate anybody.
And you're stacking the board.
And, and also, a lot of people, also, a lot of people on these boards may have lived in one ward when they were appointed and then moved.
Let me remind each one of you that we have twenty-some-odd different boards and commissions that we have to appoint people to. And these lists are readily available through, uh, through Ms. Donaldson. And that I challenge each of you this year, because when we do have a opening come up, I get an email from Ms. Donaldson, I email you guys, and I get no response. So, my challenge is to you is that when we have one of these openings come up, please, check with your constituents, find out who's willing to serve, and have somebody ready to pull the trigger on. Is that fair enough?
Appreciate it, Mayor.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, so, where are we at? Where are we, what do we need to do on this? We're gonna table this?
I'm gonna withdraw my motion, with due respect.
Yes, ma'am.
And, uh, we're gonna proceed, I believe, you moved to, sorry, someone moved to continue this agenda item.
Yes, we continue.
I'll make a motion to continue.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion and I have a second. Do I have any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item? We are going to institute electronic voting as soon as practical. Next item? Ladies and gentlemen, we now enter into the public discussion, new business of our council agenda. Anyone that wants to bring something to council is welcome to do so. I do want to remind you as a point of clarification that due to Oklahoma Open Meetings Law, that we cannot engage in a conversation with you on this particular item, but if the item is noteworthy, we can bring it back next council meeting for an agenda item. With that being said, does anyone have anything to bring before the council? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. Does anybody need a recess before we move on? I now call a order of the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We have four discussion items on this agenda.
First item is discussion consideration of approving the minutes of the staff briefing and regular meeting of December twelfth, twenty seventeen, as submitted.
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Next item?
This is discussion consideration of accepting the report on the current financial condition of the Sheridan Midwest City Hotel at the Reed Reed Center for the period ending November thirtieth, twenty seventeen.
Sorry, I would like to point out that we are turning a profit this year. We had a bad year a couple of years ago. Economic downturn, things have started to turn around, and we are turning a profit on this. And it's, it's nice to see, and I know how hard staff, and this is Tim's baby, so we blame you when it, when we don't make any money and we praise you when it does. Tim's done a good job of making sure that we've got the right people involved, and while we'd all love to see much better numbers, I'm very happy that we're going in the positive direction.
Move to approve the report?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
My name's Charles Thompson, ten four hundred Northeast Fourth. How long has the city owned the Reed Center?
Since it was opened.
Do you know how many years? Anybody know how many years?
Probably oh-three, I'm thinking. We built the Reed Center first and then the hotel later.
How many years has it made money and not cost the city money?
Almost every year. I think it was just one year where it didn't, wasn't it?
You know, I'd want to do a little research on it before I gave you an answer, to be honest with you.
Because I've looked over the city budget, it's really hard to tell the difference between the Sheridan and the Reed Center and what money goes where, so...
Well, the reason it's difficult to tell that is because we, because we own both the hotel and the conference center, we we organize that budget collectively together, so it's, it's, it's more difficult to, to necessarily be able to identify the, 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 the cost and expenses and revenue on the hotel versus the Reed Center, because there's a very symbiotic relationship between the two. The people in the, in the convention center are selling the, selling the hotel rooms as part of the, as part of the conference center activity, so...
So are you saying that you take them both together, or you can separate them out? Because I would be interested to know if either one of them has made much money for the city, because it seems from what I've read that they've lost money. Is that not accurate?
No, I, Tim, can you, you could answer the question a little bit better in terms of being able to segregate the, the expenses and the revenues.
Yeah, it is complicated because the, how we present the operating budget is purely from an operations perspective, not from principal and interest, so, because principal and interest is paid from the capital improvement sales, quarter penny sales tax, so that is not factored into the financial report. And then when you go back in the past years, we were taking three hundred and sixty thousand dollars a year as owner's return on equity. And so what we'd have to do is go back and draw out all that owner's return on equity, and it's millions of dollars. I mean, we couldn't just sit here and give you it off our cuff, how much that is.
So if we took out money, then it's, then it's safe to say that it was making money or it was costing?
It's safe to say that it was making more revenue than expenses, that it wasn't covering the principal and interest, because, and it was never designed to cover the principal and interest, because it was funded through a quarter penny capital improvement tax for the PNI, so... And then the bonds were merged together to get a lower interest rate a few years ago, so there's a lot of moving parts that go with that, that budget.
It'd be interesting to understand that a little bit better.
I have a spreadsheet in my office that has, you know, how the money's flowed from fund balance back to the city, because it used to be if the, if it made any money at all, we would just sweep that money over to capital improvements in the city, and so you have to go back and look from the beginning.
Okay, any further discussion on this current item? We do have a motion, and I have a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item?
Mr. Mayor, before we go on to the next item, this is a teaching moment for me. On, just so I'm clear, on these items like the ones that we're going over now, where it just says discussion and consideration, does that allow for public comment? I thought the only time that we could actually let somebody come up and talk, if it's a public hearing.
Point well taken.
I mean, I don't know. Is that, is that true?
I think we'd be remiss, I'd happen to defer to the city attorney, but I think we'd be remiss if we didn't allow public discussion on these items. It is a public entity, but that's why we have an agenda. Is that not correct?
Well, I think what, what Councilman Byrne is referring to is that there are, there are certain agenda items, particularly as they relate to, to rezoning actions, land use decisions, where we specifically, and the, and the law requires that they be advertised and conducted as public hearings, which gives the citizenry the opportunity, and they know that they're, that they have an opportunity to get up and speak. These aren't identified, like this one is not identified as a public hearing, and that's probably the only, that's the distinction, is, is that that under the state law and we have to classify them as public hearings. So it's, it's, you know, in, in my years here, we have, we have, if someone has a question on an agenda item, we've never, never prevented them from coming up to ask the question.
I was just curious.
Yeah. Right.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I can tell you, I had some discussion with O'Mill today about public discussions, and it was two for one, was during the public discussion phase, can there be discussion between council and the citizen on the new business and things they bring up, and the answer is no, because you have to have some type of notice to the rest of the public who might want to be there for that discussion. And so what you have to do is either the mayor gives the city manager a direction to take some action to get more information, or you're directed to put it on the agenda for public discussion. There's nothing, and this says discussion and consideration, and also confirmed with O'Mill, they said the time for discussion on agenda items is at, at the end of the discussion item prior to the vote, and that was what I received from O'Mill.
No, I'm just...
That's a, that's a good point.
I just noticed that it's listed two different places.
Yes, sir. Okay, next item up for discussion. Yes, sir, we do.
Is discussion consideration of approval of a professional agreement to engage the Baker Group to represent the authority as municipal advisor in connection with the issuance and sale of its Series twenty eighteen revenue bonds, and authorize the chairman to execute and deliver the professional agreement and such other documents and agreements as may be necessary or required relating thereto. You have the proposed professional services agreement in the agenda. Again, this is associated with the proposed refinancing of the Town Center project. Staff recommends approval.
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Now move into the...
This is consideration, consider an approval of a professional agreement to engage Hillburn and Wiedeman, a professional corporation, to represent the authority as bond counsel in connection with the issuance and the sale of its Series twenty eighteen revenue bonds, and authorize the chairman to execute and deliver the professional agreement and such other documents as agreements as may be necessary or required relating thereto.
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ladies and gentlemen, we now move into the public discussion and new business of Midwest City Municipal Authority. Does anyone in the audience have anything to bring before the Municipal Authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. I call a order of the Midwest City Economic Development Commission. We have three discussion items.
First item is discussion consideration of approving the minutes of the staff briefing and regular meeting of October tenth, twenty seventeen, meeting as submitted.
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Next item?
This is discussion, discussion of the convention and visitor bureau quarterly activity report for the period ending December thirty-one, twenty seventeen. This is for information purposes.
Move to accept the report?
Thank you.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item?
Discussion consideration of accepting the Midwest City Chamber of Commerce's quarterly report for the period ending December thirty-one, twenty seventeen.
Move to accept the report?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ladies and gentlemen, we move into our new business, public discussion for the Midwest City Economic Development Commission. Anyone having anything to bring before the commission? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. I now call a order to the special economic development authority meeting. We have two items of discussion.
These are similar items to the, those two that were considered by the Municipal Authority. First is discussion consideration of approval of professional agreement to engage the Baker Group to represent the authority's municipal advisor in connection with the issuance and sale of the Series twenty eighteen revenue bonds, and authorize the chairman to execute and deliver the professional agreement and such other documents and agreements as may be necessary or required relating thereto.
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item?
Consideration approval of a professional agreement to engage Hillburn and Wiedeman, a professional corporation, to represent the authority as bond counsel in connection with the issuance and sale of its Series twenty eighteen revenue bonds, and authorize the chairman to execute and deliver the professional agreement and such other documents and agreements as may be necessary or required relating thereto.
Move to approve?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Ladies and gentlemen, we now move into our public discussion, new business for this commission. Anyone have any, bring, anything to bring before the commission? Hearing none, we're hereby adjourned. We do have an executive session?
No, that's under the hospital.
I now call a order to the Midwest City... I'm sorry for the confusion. I now call a order to the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. We have one discussion item. Or we do have a consent agenda, I'm sorry. entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda? Move to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
Councilman Byrne makes a, makes a suggestion that perhaps we should pull C two and C three so that we can clarify that, and I guess I'm doing this now, but that we can provide some clarification to the public regarding the announcement about the super fund site out east on Twenty-Ninth Street.
Okay, move to, move to pull items two and three, but approve item number one on the consent agenda. I have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? We will now hear item two on the consent agenda.
This is discussion consideration of entering into a memorandum of understanding with the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality to enroll eighty-eight twenty-six dash eighty-eight twenty-eight Southeast Twenty-Ninth Street in the Oklahoma Brownfields program. Mr. Coleman?
Hey, Robert, the reason that...
I'd ask that it be pulled, this, the announcement that you made earlier about what came out in the news today. And I think it's important that we let the citizens know these aren't related.
Some way.
Well, this, but this project is not related to what was on the news today.
No, in newsok.com this afternoon, an EPA press release was done, I believe either late this morning or early this afternoon, and on, on the newspaper's online site, they outlined the fact that ten nine zero one, the last home for Eagle Industries, was placed on the National Priorities List, the super fund list. That is not our site at eighty-eight twenty-six and eighty-eight twenty-eight Southeast Twenty-Ninth Street. It's owned by the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. The reason that we're asking to be put into the Brownfields program is partly because of that. It will protect us from further EPA action while we pursue the testing and if necessary, the remediation to make this site where it can be redeveloped.
Based off that, I make a motion to accept number two or pass?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on this item? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Next item?
This is discussion consideration of approving an agreement with the Oklahoma Department of Environmental Quality for partial reimbursement of expenses related to the performance of a Phase Two environmental site assessment for eighty-eight twenty-six through eighty-eight twenty-eight Southeast Twenty-Ninth Street.
Many thanks to the director of the State Department of Environmental Quality, Mr. Thompson, who was, who helped find the funds necessary to offer this agreement up to the hospital authority. You may remember on December the twelfth, we authorized SES engineers to begin conducting a Phase Two site assessment, environmental site assessment for our sites on Twenty-Ninth Street. Before they could start the work, I got a call from Dr. Rita Kocke from ODEQ, who said that they may be able to offer up a reimbursement for our expenses relative to that, to that testing. This agreement is for that cause. Once, once this is executed, we will proceed with the contract with SES engineers to commence the work, and we'll get most of the money reimbursed for that action.
Move to approve? Second.
I do want to make a point of clarification that we voluntarily entered into this Phase Two to ensure that we don't, there's no evidence of any contamination whatsoever on that site. And we voluntarily entered into a Phase Two to ensure that there is no contamination present, and we're willing to accept the consequences either way. Is that correct?
You're exactly right, Mr. Chairman. In fact, we had a Phase One environmental site assessment executed, executed on this site prior to our purchase of the property in two thousand and fourteen, and there was no mention of the chemicals that were outlined in the November twelfth, twenty seventeen Oklahoma article Oklahoma article that first drew attention back to this site.
And this, and the result of this study is the obscure, uh, comment by an employee that, uh, we're not even sure that it was an employee, that was made to a, a reporter. Is that, is that a fair statement?
That's accurate, to the best of my knowledge, sir.
All right. With that being said, I do have a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? That sounded like a senate hearing, didn't it? I'm, yeah.
Just for the record, Mr. Mayor, that would've drawn an objection anyplace else.
We do have three discussion items on this agenda.
First item is discussion consideration of action to reallocate assets, change fund managers, or make changes in the statement of investment policy guidelines and objectives. I have not received any, uh, input or report from, uh, uh, Mr. Gerrells that this, uh, that there are any changes that are necessary, so staff would, uh, no actions necessary on this item.
Next item.
This is a discussion consideration of approving the revised agreement with Capital Decisions, Inc., in the amount of sixty thousand dollars to continue to provide consultant services regarding economic, community development, and redevelopment interest in Midwest City for a period from January one, twenty eighteen, through June thirtieth, twenty eighteen. Agreement's been revised based upon previous conversations and discussions, uh, and, uh, staff would recommend approval.
Motion to. Motion to approve.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion on this item? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Next item.
This is discussion consideration of a status report on the proposed bond issue for the soon-erose Tiff District. Mr. Nito, I asked him to come up and share the similar, uh, uh, report that he provided to you all in pre-council.
I'm Greg Nito, and I'm with the Baker Group, and I really appreciate y'all hiring me now, so, it's a good thing. So, we're ready to proceed, but, I'm gonna give you an update. We're moving expeditiously on the financing of the Tiff. Uh, we did a ban, a bond anticipation note, if you recall, so we could get started, uh, and we knew that we were gonna be taking this out soon, and we are ready now to proceed. We're gonna submit information to the rating agencies. But, Mr. Henson wanted me to just specify, the structure that we're using to get the lowest interest rate that we can, uh, is we're first basing everything upon the revenues derived from the project, the sales tax and the, the, the property taxes. Then, in the event, hopefully it does not happen, we're being conservative in our projections, but in the event that some shortfall should take place over the twenty years, we're, we have said that we're gonna take a portion of the hospital trust fund, all, only those that can be utilized or available in a legal way, and we might have to supplement what's called a replenishment agreement. We're gonna take a small reserve, in relative terms, set it aside. If we start to run short of revenues, we're going to extract money from that reserve to make up any debt service shortfall. In the event that happens, that will give us time to adjust things or work with the, the, the leasing, I mean, the Tiff District itself. But in the event that that does happen, we commit to take and replenish that agreement. If it's gonna be about two months' worth of debt service, roughly two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that will set aside, hopefully we'll never touch it. But we wanted to stress the fact that in the event that some catastrophic thing happens, we will be taking the revenues that might be available off the hospital trust fund, and replenishing that agreement as we go. Hopefully, it will never happen. We've been conservative, we've, we've received, uh, information, financial information from the powers that be, as far as the projections are concerned. We've been very conservative on those, and it should never take place, but I wanted to be sure that you're aware of that. We are gonna submit this information to Standard and Poor's for the rating. It'll take a couple of weeks. We anticipate getting into the market right now, just received some information today, taxable bonds, which is what this will be, there's gonna be a lot of demand for them. And the spreads between tax-exempt municipals and taxable bonds is, is getting narrower, so we stand, stand to benefit, really, from coming into this new tax law year. So, that's, that's basically the update. We're ready to proceed forward, and I'll be glad to answer any questions. And I don't normally sound like this.
I'm moving approved.
Any further discussion?
Move to acknowledge and approve the status report.
I have a motion.
You had a motion.
Now I need a second.
Well, I had already said motion to approve, but second.
I have a motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Thank you all.
Thank you, Mr. Nito, appreciate it. We now move into the, uh, new business public discussion of the Midwest City Hospital Authority agenda. Anyone having any, any business to bring before the authority? Hearing none, we're, uh, we have an executive session that we need to go into.
This is discussion consideration of, one, entering into executive session as allowed under twenty five OS, section three oh seven, C ten, to confer on matters pertaining to economic development, including the transfer of property financing, or the creation of a proposal to entice a business to remain or to locate within the city, and two, in open session, authorizing the city manager to take action as appropriate based on the discussion and executive session.
Move to go to executive session.
Executive session.
Second. I have a motion, and I have a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ladies and gentlemen, we are now in, uh, executive session. Thank you for being here.